Before we go on to roll call, Councillor Vehill called a few minutes ago. He may be a little late. And Councillor Stefano talked to me earlier. He didn't know if he would be here for the meeting. He's going to try to get here sometime if possible. So that's where we're at, Holly. So why don't we go ahead and take a roll call? Start voting, please. Holly?
We have a quorum with all councillors present except for Councillor Vehill and Councillor Stefano.
Thank you. So we'll move on to agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda? Heather or Holly? No?
I motion we approve the agenda as presented and excuse Councillor Stefano. And I believe beyond Vehill will be here shortly.
Second that motion.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the roll call? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have one card. That is Mr. Frank Muniz. Would you step up to the podium, Mr. Muniz? Give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Frank Muniz, Veteran Service Officer for Alamosa County, 3571 South County Road 103, Alamosa, Colorado. And a very pleasant good evening to all of you. And I thank you for allowing me to come in front of you. And recently, I had a meeting with the county commissioners. And I suggested that they revisit the idea of a veterans memorial for the city and county of Alamosa. So what I'm here for tonight is to ask for your help. I want to form a committee and assemble some of the best public relations people we have so that we can get the whole community involved. I'd like to get artists of this area and perhaps other areas in a design competition. Maybe we could offer them $500 for the design we select. It could be bronze, granite, maybe a military artifact. It don't have to be elaborate. A place where we could preserve the stories of our fallen warriors and the hearts and minds of our future generations. A tribute to the best of American dreams of freedom, compassion, and bravery. I'm thinking of a peaceful memorial where people can go there to mourn, pray, whatever. A location probably in an area that's not too close to high noisy traffic areas and yet very visible. And I'm asking for one of your members or somebody with good public relation skills to be in our committee. And I would ask you to select the person that we can, with good public relation skills, that we can work together. I'm seeking to get someone from the colleges as well and someone from the public. And maybe we can start this project. It's got to be a whole community project, not just city of Alamosa and the county. So that's what I'm looking for. And I'm asking for your help with some good minds that we can bring this forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions or comments for Frank?
I have one, Mayor. I'm sorry. How soon do you want to put this committee together, Mr. Muniz? And how big of a committee are you looking at?
I'm looking at six or seven.
Six or seven?
Yeah.
And how soon do you want to maybe convene this committee to start maybe some kind of discussion on? The place you describe is it's a pretty tall order that you're asking, you know? A quiet but yet visible place. It's, you know, I know the one there as you're leaving Fort Garland that sits back. It's visible and it's quiet. It's really a nice memorial that that community put together. And I don't know, maybe through some kind of discussion or something, we would be able to find an area like that.
The area that the county commissioners offered was the area between the county administration and the new county clerk and treasurer's office in between there someplace. Now, that's not, you know, that's free land. And I think that's where we have to start.
So over at the People's Place you were talking about?
Right.
Councillor Gillespie?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. I think the city's been looking at that suggestion for quite some time now. And I think that's what we need to get it off the ground, is someone to step forward and form a committee and work on that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. The next card I have is from Helen Sigmund. Thank you for being here, Sigmund. Give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, Helen Sigmund, 16 Cottonwood Place, Alamosa. And I appreciate so much the leaf pickup, but this year it seemed to end awfully early. I know last year they did one extra one. I have 12 trees or more in my yard, and I still have all these leaves to be picked up. I didn't know if there could be some consideration for that.
Thank you. Now we have follow-up. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Vehill?
A follow-up question to that would be the, are you talking about the green trash bag? Trash cans?
Yes, the green trash cans, yes. And last year, they continued it. You know, is it climate change? Who knows? There's still a lot of trees on, but then today we had snow spitting out us, didn't we? So, but there's still so many leaves.
You've got some real large items, I mean, large branches and stuff like that? Or what are the hell?
Well, no, just the leaves. I mean, our yard is just covered with leaves, so. Just the green trash.
The reason I was saying that is we're still, are we still doing large item pickups, Heather? Or it's already done?
I'm not sure. I'm looking to Pat, our Public Works Director. Pat?
Large item pickup has finished for the year, but we have extended the yard waste pickup. That'll be Monday.
Monday, great. Just one more Monday? What relief! Great!
Maybe we can have Pat come up here for the follow-up and tell us a little bit about the green leaf pickup and that kind of stuff. When it ended, when it starts, or do we need to extend it because the fall has been so warm or anything like that? Pat, thank you for coming up and visiting with us about this.
Not a problem. A couple of weeks ago, we noticed the project, it was due to stop two weeks ago. We extended it until such time that the majority of the leaves have come off. So we'll keep it going until we don't need it anymore.
Okay. Do you have any idea when that might be, Pat?
I'm guessing a couple of weeks.
Okay, that'll give the citizens in our community an opportunity to kind of know what's happening.
Yeah, they've started falling pretty actively now, so I don't imagine it'll be too long.
Well, maybe we can have a public service announcement for that or just send it out with water bills or something, just extending that.
Well, I think the service announcement we should probably do is when we are going to end it is, you know, we'll do an announcement at that point in time.
Thank you, Heather. And do we have a follow-up on Mr. Muniz's request? Is anyone on council willing to participate on that committee? Councillor Vehill?
I would like to, if no one else wants to.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz, you have a volunteer from council. Mr. Vehill is, he's volunteering. Absolutely. Councillor Grealish, I know you're trying to push that button.
Yeah, no, I'm glad that these young people want to get involved, but I'll be there also. You know, if he wants to be the liaison, that's great. But I definitely will be there also. Thank you.
Councillor Grealish has always been a liaison with any of the military issues, and we appreciate that of him. Thank you, Councillor Vehill, for stepping forward. And so with that, we will move on to ceremonial items. Tonight, we have two. The first is the introduction of Officer Jason Russell and Community Service Officer Steve Earls. Chief, thank you for being here.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, tonight, we're here to again introduce you to, hopefully, is one of the last two ones we have to do in a while. It's been a long time coming that we've been fully staffed. And the two officers standing in front of you tonight are the last two that we've hired and are bringing on board. So I'll let Captain Mestis, who is the operations commander, and Captain Anderson, who is the support services commander, introduce them.
Counsel, it's great, with great pleasure to announce Jason Russell, who just completed his FTO program, which is a field training officer program. And he successfully completed 560 hours. With that, I'd like to welcome you aboard. And here's a certificate of appreciation. If you want to say a few things, Counsel. Didn't realize I was going to get put on the spot here. But I'd like to thank you guys, and it's an honor to be here. Look forward to many years' service. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counsel, how are you? It's an honor for me to be able to introduce Steve Earls to you. Steve just completed 230 hours of the FTO field training program. Actually, both of these officers are from Monavista. But I think we're honored, or I'm honored to introduce them to you guys, and I'm happy to see them with Alamosa.
Thank you.
I'd like to say it's a pleasure to be here, and I look forward to serving you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Anderson and Mestis. And thank you, Chief, and welcome to the force, gentlemen. Any comments or Councillor Coleman?
Yeah, I would like to welcome the two officers to our great city. You are joining an excellent team, and we're glad that you're here to help us out with the activities that go on on a daily basis. Thank you so much, and looking forward to a meeting and get to know all of you better.
Councillor Grealish?
Yes, I want to echo that, those same comments. And is it Steve Earls that is going to be the community, the community services? Chief, is that, what is that the?
That's our nuisance handles, many of our nuisance, community general items enforcement items.
And that, Steve is a very, very good job and a tough job. So welcome.
Thank you, Counsel. And so that will move on to the introduction of a new employee, Kristin Van Geeson, as a finance analyst. And Amanda, thank you for being here.
It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Kristin Van Geeson. She is the newest member of our finance department. While she may be a new face to you, she's a familiar face to all of us here at City Hall, because she's actually been with us since January. She was hired on as a student intern from Adams State. A lot of that is to give credit to Lisa Henzley, because she helped in bringing that into the city and helping her get here. Kristin is a native, not a native of Alamosa. She's been here since she was younger. She's an Alamosa High School graduate. She is a double major from Adams State in finance. So we are very pleased to have her qualities and what she has to offer us, and we're excited to have her as part of our team.
Thank you, Amanda. And Kristin, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I majored in accounting and finance. I've lived in Alamosa since I was two. I'm excited to be joining the team here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Coleman?
Welcome, Kristin. Kristin is a great example of the internship and collaboration with ASU and the city. And I'm really pleased to see you being a part of our team. Kristin, I'm just going to tell you a story. She was an intern not only here, but she did some other internship work across the street over there at the SLV DRG, I'm sorry, in that building over there, just about helping out in every department over there. Then when I come over here to the city, she's helping out in just about every department over here. So this is a good example of how we can keep some of our brightest and talented people here in Alamosa by building that collaboration and working with the college and the high schools. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to seeing you do your thing here in the finance department.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristin. I don't think I could top that, Councillor Coleman. That's excellent. Very good. I don't know if I've known Kristin since she was two, but welcome. We'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 21, 2015. Councillor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second. I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? None? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Public Works, this evening, we have a first reading on Ordinance Number 21-2015 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 10, Article 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa, Colorado to add Section 10-221 to modify existing regulations and establish new regulations for mobile food vendors. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Counsel. Ordinance 10, 2010 of the City of Alamosa Court of Ordinances included provisions that limit the annual period of operations for mobile food vendors to 180 days in any calendar year. In the spring of this year, Randy Wright, Executive Director of the Alamosa County Economic Development Corporation and Director of the Alamosa Chamber of Commerce, communicated to staff that he was fielding questions from potential vendors who were trying to decide if they should make a sizable investment in equipment and capital when this 180-day limit would severely impact their operations. At that point, staff committed to researching the issue. What we uncovered is that across the nation, communities are reevaluating their stance on mobile food vending. The mobile vending market has made significant strides in quality, appearance, safety, public acceptance, and even has television shows dedicated to showcasing the best of the best. These industry developments have demanded much larger investments and personal commitments than previously required. And although typically smaller because of the limited size of the mobile food vending units, the investments made in many of the kitchens associated with these operations could easily compete with those of commercial kitchens found in the more traditional brick-and-mortar restaurants. Additionally, it is becoming apparent that these types of mobile businesses are creating a higher level of vitality and pedestrian activity in their communities and have allowed entrepreneurs to enter the restaurant industry with a higher success rate. However, the concerns about how this market would compete with brick-and-mortar businesses have higher, that have higher overhead costs, remain a concern in an effort to help cities identify these issues and develop ordinances and practices that protect the investments made in the community by these traditional brick-and-mortar restaurants, while at the same time recognizing that mobile food vendors are an emerging national trend and provide the useful service of fast, convenient, and varied dining options and can further a city's desire to encourage and provide the opportunities necessary to create and maintain a vibrant and economically sustainable community. The National League of Cities conducted a national study on the issue and produced the best practices in relation to regulating mobile food vending. We reviewed and compiled several of these best practices and created a business, a bullet list of potential considerations. The ordinance presented tonight is what we feel is a compromise after consideration of the concerns and suggestions made by the stakeholders involved in its creation. The original list of best practices was presented and discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission, who provided their concerns and input. These were incorporated into the list, which was then presented to a group of local brick-and-mortar restaurant owners. Their comments and concerns were then used, I need to bring my glasses, were then used to create a draft ordinance that was presented to council during a work session on October 14 of this year. Council's comments for the work session were then compiled and incorporated into the ordinance you see tonight. Since the work session, the changes made have included wordsmithing changes and section additions by the city attorney in an effort to make this new ordinance incorporate more seamlessly into our existing licensing scheme. We've included the provision of the requirement for a mobile vending permit for each mobile food vehicle operated in the city, including multiple vehicles owned by the same owner. We have changed the signage clause to reference our existing sign ordinance to allow temporary signage so long as it fully complies with Chapter 21, Article 10 of our existing code. We have allowed the use of hoses, electric cords, gas lines, and other apparatus so long as it does not present an unsafe condition to pedestrians or the motor in public. And we have adjusted the hours of operation as per your wishes.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate all the extensive work that Public Works and staff have done on this. And thank you for incorporating a lot of the changes that we asked for during the work session. Councillor Coleman?
Yeah, thank you, Pat. I had an opportunity to talk with some of the mobile vendors here in town and run this modified version by them. And Pat, you and your staff have done a very good job of modifying this ordinance to make sure that it's beneficial not only to the brick-and-mortar businesses, but as well as to the mobile vendors. They're very pleased that you made the modification to the electrical outlets, making them to where they can still hook up to an electrical outlet as long as it's safe and the hoses as well. So thank you for that.
You bet.
Councillor Gillespie?
Yes, I also wish to thank you for, it was a very good work session we had several weeks ago. And you put together a very comprehensive ordinance that I think covered a number of issues, weighed the brick-and-mortar establishments against the mobile vendors, and I think it's very fair. So thank you for all your work and all staff's work. Thank you.
Councillor Grealish?
I missed that work session, but I was able to get together with Pat, Amanda, and city manager, and they brought me up to date on the ordinance itself. And what I wanted to thank the staff is the respect they gave the people, the brick-and-mortar people. And to try to kind of equal it, you know, I've been a businessman myself, and I ran a restaurant, and a lot goes into something like that. And to have you guys respect that and kind of even balance it out is a good thing. Some of the questions I had were, you know, the operating hours, and they were able to answer those. And one of the questions was, and I don't know if it's in this, Pat, I didn't get a chance to, I had the hard copy you gave me, and I don't know if that's the one that...
If that's the one we gave you when we talked, it has been changed since then.
It has been, okay. But you did, did you also address the resident as far as somebody, calling somebody over, let's say, for the Super Bowl? You know, I have a big yard, and I call Pat's...
Pat's catering?
Yeah, over and have him maybe sit in the back. And I know that they're not supposed to be in residential area, but those, I don't know, some of those are the exceptions that...
We haven't addressed that specifically yet. We may look at creating a temporary food zone or something to allow that kind of activity. But it's, again, if it's there to serve one house and one party and one group of people, I think it's probably just a catering business that falls under our existing licensing scheme.
Instead of a mobile?
Instead of a mobile vendor.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what everybody else has said. Pat, your hard work on this, and also us as a council coming together and finding some issues and some questions and that. And staff went to work on that. One thing I like about this is the creation of food zones and how that will direct some foot traffic, especially in the summertime and that, to places around the city, our parks and that, and how that can highlight our city even more. So I really like that idea, and thank you again, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Counsel?
Well, Mayor, if there's no other, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councillor Grealish?
If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion we pass on first reading, Ordinance Number 21-2015, and set it for a public hearing on November the...
18th.
18th at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
I second. I've got a motion in a second on Ordinance Number 21-2015. Is there any further discussion? Say none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business brought forward by city manager and legal. Authorized the city manager to award the contract to RPI Consulting for the update to the comprehensive plan, downtown assessment, and land development code assessment and correction. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. We are very excited as staff to start this process of updating our comprehensive plan. To provide a little bit of history of how we got to this point, the first part, I guess, is to mention that it was 18 years ago, the last time the city updated its comprehensive plan, and that was in 1997. A lot has changed for the community since 1997, as well as the planning environment and what communities expect from an update to the comprehensive plan. More recently, our first step in this process was to budget approximately $150,000 in the CIP. We then applied for a mineral impact grant in the amount of $100,000, which brought our total budget to $250,000. The other step that we took was to create a committee. And we had two volunteers from council, two volunteers from planning and zoning. And then we tried to identify members from our partners. So someone from the school district, someone from the business community, different representatives and partners, Jamie from the marketing district, those types of partners were invited to attend. We had a joint work session between the city council and the planning and zoning to review the draft scope of services, which is included in the item in front of you, and we'll review that here shortly. I think it was very good discussion. I think even having the joint work session was good in regards to the discussion between city council and our planning and zoning members. The next step then was to issue a request for proposal, and we did that. We received seven proposals. Our commitment to our committee was you could be as involved as you needed to be. We had very busy people, and if they were willing to review all the proposals and see the process all the way through, we would take that. If they had to come and go, we still wanted to have their input. So when we received the seven, that was sent out to the committee members. Some of them read all seven proposals, some of them chose not to. But we took the input that we could. Of those seven, we selected four that we thought best met the qualifications, experience, and what our desires were from a community perspective. And those four firms were invited to come and do an in-house interview process. And so they were dedicated two hours each to be able to do a bit of a presentation. We could get a feel for how they would perform some of the duties within their proposals. We were able to ask any questions if we had concerns about weaknesses within their proposals and just get a feel for the dynamic from each firm. Part of that interview process was myself, Pat, and we were able to have our two P&amp;Z members, Mary Ann Dunn with the county and Jeff Ausley with the Small Business Development Center. And following that, as a group, we unanimously felt that RPI was the best fit. When you look at their experience compared to the other firms, they've done a lot of comprehensive plan updates. They've done them for communities that... They've done them for communities that are similarly situated as the city. We were able to follow up on their work experience, not just what they listed in regards to references, but the other communities as well, and make sure that any concerns we may have had, that they were able to be answered, or if we really felt strongly on what their strengths were, they were able to confirm those, and so it was very helpful to do that process. It just so happened that RPI was also the lowest bidder, and what that allowed us to do is to make sure that we had enough hours built in for the public input side of it, and it also allowed us to get more out of the update to the code correction than what we would have been able to get. Sometimes this is done as two different processes because they're fairly significant, but by being able to combine them, you can take advantage of the information that's collected through the update to the comp plan and fold some of that in to the code correction. They're still going to be slightly different processes, but there's some synergy there as well to using the same group and some savings to the city, and it's something that was needed. I think as Pat's group is trying to work with developers, it's clear that there's some things that might be missing from our code, there's some things that might contradict, and there's things that are frankly outdated. So in order to really be development-friendly and have our most professional foot forward, we felt this was important. So we were very fortunate that the firm we felt was the strongest match was also one that we could expand the scope to fully capture this update to the code. What I plan to do next, if you give me one second, is quickly just walk through the scope of work, and I will put up there on the screen, it's probably blurry, but you have essentially a breakdown for cost based on the type of person who will be working on that project. So you have a principal hour, an associate hour, and then admin hours, and then underneath you can see for each of the scope of work items, the anticipated hours. The reason that the contract says not to exceed, it's standard contract language, but it's also because there's some areas we thought their hours, especially meeting with some of the public, might be lower than what it would really take, but it could be that they really understood what it was going to take, and they didn't need that many hours. So it very well could come in below the budget, but that is where some of the hours were that we asked them to increase. We'd rather do too much public outreach than not enough. So to briefly go over the scope of work, if you've got the kickoff, this is essentially where they're going to get a lay of the land, they're going to have pretty intense meetings with our city departments, we're going to show them around the city, they're going to get a feel for what do we currently have in place, what are we struggling with, what have been our successes, they're going to look at what planning documents we already have in place, they're going to meet with city council and planning commission and get your input from the very beginning on some of the items you foresee, and ask you questions about the vision for the community. They're going to do what has traditionally been your standard update to a comprehensive plan, the economics, the demographics, the trends, benchmarks, housing supply and demand base maps, all of that is what you have traditionally seen previously from updates to the comprehensive plan. Eighteen years ago, that would probably be a majority of what the update to the comprehensive plan included. Phase two is when we look at the different plan elements. So if you think of the plan as something that's going to have tabs in it, some of these are going to be what the different tabs are. So one of the tabs will be economic development. They're going to do some community meetings, they're going to do community interviews, they're going to do a web survey, they're going to work with doing our partners who would be responsible for implementation and meet with them. They're going to maybe do a focus group, and then from that, they're going to draft a potential economic development plan element. The next tab, if you think of it that way, is the infrastructure and core services, and a lot of this is the guts of what have been traditional updates to comprehensive plans with a lot more public input. They're going to do interviews with different focus groups, they're going to, again, reach out to different set of partners, they're going to touch base with our advisory committee, they're going to create the inventory and assessment of core infrastructure, a bike and pedestrian mobility plan, streets and highways assessment, priority parks, recreation open space improvements, water sewer and other utilities, internet and cell phone infrastructure. So this is the nuts and bolts of a city, the infrastructure that just comes together to make Alamosa what it is. They're going to assess that and also apply that public outreach. That public outreach is going to allow them to know what are the desires, is there areas we're not doing very well, is there areas we're doing better than we need to be doing? What do they want to see in five, ten, fifteen years? The land use isn't as necessarily exciting for most people, but that's a lot of where you see your zoning. Do we have the right zones? Do we have the right uses allowed in the zones? Do we have zonings next to each other that make sense? Are we missing certain zonings? Those types of things. So they will have another meeting with the advisory board, some more community outreach, meetings with staff, and then they also start looking at the future land use map. And then a component I haven't mentioned yet, but that is going to be unique to this comprehensive plan compared to the one eighteen years ago, is the discussions we'll have with the city county and what's called the city peripheral and the three-mile plan. And that's an area of, you know, if the city's going to grow in this area, is there things we can work together so that development is in an orderly fashion to where if it's time that we annex it, it doesn't have a negative impact on our infrastructure, and they will help facilitate those discussions. Because it is a DOLA grant-funded project, we need to have the hazard identification, which is not necessarily that big of a deal, but it is a component that's needed, and then we also do need to have an IGA with the county following this. Now, talking to Kristi Kulp, that can be as simple as we're going to continue these discussions, or if these facilitated discussions net meteor items, it can include that as well. So it's not something to be worried about not being able to accomplish, but it is a DOLA requirement. Then, the big thing that's changed in regards to how comprehensive plans are handled, and it's something that's to make sure that it's not sitting on a shelf gathering dust, and that is setting up the plan for implementation. It's getting a spreadsheet that identifies what needs to happen, who needs to take the lead on it, and how long should that take? And so it's folding all of everything up above into something that's concise and to the point and easy to measure, so we can get a feel, are we implementing our comprehensive plan? Without this, it's very hard to say if you're implementing it or not. It's kind of a gut check, but when you have an actual table that you can look at what should be accomplished, it's much easier to measure. The other part I want to make sure that you've picked up on from my wording is through this process, especially from the community outreach, there might be issues that are brought up as community issues that are not the responsibility of the city, but that doesn't mean they're not a community issue, and that's why it's important that we're involving the discussions with our partners, and we're trying to not cast a small net on getting the input from the community. It's a wide net, and it's trying to work through, if it's not the city taking the lead, does it make sense from another partner to take the lead on it? An example could be from sitting in meetings I've heard from a workforce and developers and our current employers, that health or childcare is sometimes an issue when they're trying to attract employees and early childhood care. That's not necessarily something that would be a city responsibility, but if there's no one out there, it at least begins the discussion of do we need to pull a committee together to start looking at this? Is it that big of an issue? That type of thing. So there's different items that could come out of the public process. The plan review and the adoption, again, there's going to be more. That draft gets presented to the public, there's a chance to get feedback on it, and then all of that gets brought before planning and zoning, and then city council, and then you'll get your final documents. The other two areas for the scope of work is when you're doing a comprehensive plan, that's a very top-level type of plan, we wanted to take advantage of this outreach and these discussions to really also take a look at our downtown and our commercial corridor, and is there stuff there that's preventing development? Is there stuff there we're not taking advantage of? What are some of the assets that we could emphasize more, or what's detracting from it that we need to change? And so that's what the separate cost item for number one is. And so the first one is they're going to incorporate the appropriate information from those other meetings that they've held, incorporate that into this section, but then they're really going to target our business community. They're going to do interviews, they're going to do a survey, some forums, they're going to attend different meetings, they're going to do a walking tour with business and community leaders. We wanted to take a look at our parking. We think we need more parking downtown, but do you need it the same on every block? Are some blocks fine and other blocks need it? Is it four spots that are needed or fifty spots? This information will give, this will give us better information to answer that. They're also going to take a look at what are the three most catalytic downtown sites in order to get things going and what should be the focus. They're also going to look at wayfinding. And I was meeting with Counselor Coleman, and he said, "What exactly is that wayfinding?" And it's a fancy way of saying that they're going to look at how visitors come through our community, where the major traffic comes from, and do we have the right signs in place? Some of it you guys have already had on your radar. At your main entrances, you want monument signage, and we have that at some of our main entrances. But once you get within Alamosa, do we have signs that are directing them where we want them to be? I know Don Thompson has been very passionate about those who are traveling east on one sixty are one block away from the downtown, and there's nothing pointing them to the downtown businesses. Is there a sign pointing anyone to the golf course? So what they would do is they would say, "What are the assets you want to attract people towards, and what kind of signs do you need to get them there?", and then, "Where do those signs go and how do they look?", so it's attractive. You don't want a mismatched set of signs. It's to kind of blend everything and give a certain level of professionalism. They're also going to look at pedestrian bicycle improvement, commercial district assessment, and that's the downtown. And then the next part is the one that we were able to capture the fact that they were the low bidder, and that is the land development code assessment and correction. For most of the other firms, they were going to be able to look at our code and identify what was wrong with it, but then not have necessarily the budget to be able to rewrite those portions of the code. So what we would have gotten is a document that said, "Well, here's what's wrong with your code", but then something was still going to need to be done, which is a time commitment from a staff perspective. Because RPI was at the level of their budget they were, we were able to expand it to where then it also gets rewritten, and we will have a finished code once this is done. And so you can see the different... They're going to form a separate committee related to that, we want to make sure it's a balanced committee, and they would look at what needs to happen, what revisions, what are the gaps they want to reach out, and then they'll bring it to the planning commission and to the city council. This is probably a little more technical part of it, probably not very much fun, reading those codes and trying to figure out what needs to be changed, so it's not as fun as maybe meeting and talking to people about what kind of parks they want to see and what amenities they want to see, but definitely needed. I know from meeting with the mayor, one of the questions was, you know, "How is this different from the last comprehensive plan that the city did eighteen years ago?". And the simple fact is eighteen years ago, how comprehensive plans were handled is dramatically different than they are right now, and they did not do as much public outreach, they did not necessarily do the economic development side, and they didn't do the implementation side of it. So we are really getting a much more dramatic public outreach document and something that I think is going to be dynamic and will be implemented instead of sitting on a shelf.
Thank you, Heather. I'm sure counsel has quite a few questions or comments. Counselor Vehel?
I'll start, Mayor. I believe yourself, Mayor, were you there eighteen years ago also, or I think just you and I were there for the one that they did eighteen years ago.
Probably so, Charlie. I know you were there.
I was, fourteen years before that.
And Charlie, what did we spend on that? Fifty thousand dollars or so?
It was fifty thousand, but as the city manager's saying, it was a lot more extensive. What we're doing today is, boy, it's twenty times more work and more stuff that we're putting together in this plan that's going to drive us into the future. Counsel appointed myself and Mr. Stefano to sit on this committee, and I was able to go through all seven of those proposals, and what really struck me about the one from Durango, not because it's a low bid, but because there's a section in here that says that they speak Spanish, you know, and there's almost fifty percent of our constituents are Hispanic, and just as the city manager said, back then, when we did the one eighteen years ago, we didn't really go out there to the community and talk to the people, and we really didn't get that vision from the whole community, and I think the time they're going to spend with the constituency out there, I think we're going to get a clearer picture of where the community wants us to go and what stuff they want us to do. So I think it's a good... The ones that they did, the last one they did choose is a good proposal, and the work that they described is a lot of work, so.
Counselor Vehel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the low bid statement that's been made. If I'm, I don't know if I'm reading this right, I'm looking at the request for proposals, and I see that there was four selected for an onsite interview. It looks like we're the high bid, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, and the other group was two hundred and one, another group was two fifteen, and another group was at one ninety-nine. If I'm reading that wrong, please let me know.
And that probably is a little confusing, and so thank you for letting me explain it. What you will see is RPI is listed two times, and so how the project, so kind of how the process went is we picked the firms for interviews not based on what the prices were. They were entirely based on everything else but price, and when we went through the interview process and landed on RPI, again, it was not for price. But if any of the other ones would have been selected, we still would have had to have discussions with them on some of their scope. So for example, some didn't fully understand the discussions we wanted to have with the county, some didn't understand some of the zoning, they came in, you know, you see Bohan and Houston came in at four thousand on the zoning, so there was some things that if we selected them, they probably would have had to modify there. So not one came in one hundred percent perfect. So when we began talking to RPI, the first thing was to make sure we had enough hours dedicated to public outreach, but even at that point, it brought up, if you look at the breakdown in their scope, if you look at, it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand, so even though we increased the public participation, that only brought up their proposal to a hundred and twenty-three thousand. We also increased their public participation in the downtown assessment side of it, which then brought in another forty-five, but they were still below the, because seventy-nine thousand is what the downtown code assessed, or not down, the zoning was forty-five. So they were still below where some of the other ones were, so we were able to enhance the code that much more. So by the time we were done, yes, they are the high bidder, but we would not have been able to then enhance the scope in the same manner with those other entities. That's why we were very particular with the process in that we didn't pick them for the price, it just happened that they were the low bidder, and we were able to enhance the scope to capture more of what we needed.
Thank you, Heather, for clearing that up. A few more questions, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
How long would this whole process take?
The contract is to not exceed one year.
Okay. And how would this then affect our CIP?
My hope is that this will give you really good information to better weigh some of that CIP. So we have the matrix, but this is going to allow you to have a much more structured public input gathering tool that then apply to that matrix. And I may be the only one, but when I'm out in the community, it feels like we have people who've lived here for generations and have certain expectations, and then we have people coming from the front range that seem to have different expectations, and how do we really know if there's commonality, or are we assuming that they have different expectations? This tool's going to be able to give you much better public input to apply then to those matrices. Those matrices are non-political, they're just numbers, and that's why we've tried to emphasize it, it's a good foundation to start, but then you bring so much more as council members.
And one final thought I had comes from two years ago when we were at our CML retreat in Breckenridge. The town of Trinidad did something like this, a study specifically on their downtown and how they can revive it and that type of stuff, and they had a very extensive plan and scope of work type of deal, and they've implemented a lot of those suggestions and things that they could work on, and now the downtown of Trinidad is... And now the downtown of Trinidad is pretty neat, so I did like that, uh, the downtown study that's in this.
Thank you.
Councilor Coleman.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Heather, and thank you to your staff for all of their work in, uh, trying to get this prepared for us. It's been said that if one doesn't have a plan or a map to where they're going, any road will get you there. I think that this, uh, comprehensive plan will help us get on the right road to success when it comes to the future and the development of our city. Uh, this information will allow us to use the input that we receive from our community members and stakeholders. Uh, and here's why it's important. This will allow us to ensure that we're getting their feedback and their input to make sure that we can successfully implement this. If we don't have the community buy-in and if we don't have, uh, their, their support, we can come up with all kinds of plans and not be successful with implementing them. This plan also will allow us to, uh, stay on track as we focus on the vision of the city while making allowances for our budget on an annual basis. So I think it's very thorough. Yes, it costs more than what it cost 18 years ago, but I can assure you, we need to do a lot more different things now than what was presented 18 years ago. So thank you for that, and, and I'm looking forward to us, uh, moving forward with this.
Councilor Gregel.
I had one more question, uh, on the implementation. Is there a trigger there that, that kind of, uh, gets us to, to update this further so we don't wait another 18 years to, to look at a plan like this?
We can always get a recommendation that's put in there. Um, it's then always up to us to make sure we fund it and when it comes time, actually do it.
Heather, I'd also like to thank, uh, staff and all the, um, folks that were involved in this committee. I, I know that, uh, in visiting with some of them, uh, many of them were very interested in what was going to be done and how we're, we're going to accomplish that. And it looks like we're on the right track. Couple of, uh, questions I had specific to, um, water issues. I, I know that, uh, we're dealing with water issues and I didn't, I don't believe I saw anything, uh, as far as them looking at water other than probably just the water issue that we have out at the, uh, processing plant, our arsenic treatment plant. Uh, was anything going to be looked into as far as water, water needs for the future? Uh, and, uh, the other thing I had, uh, was to you, which was an intergovernmental agreement with the county. Are we, are they going to look at the county's comprehensive plan as well and maybe try to meld the two of these together or at least get some information for them? Do you know at all, or is that something we're going to need to visit with them about?
They are definitely going to get the, the county's planning documents. Um, I'm not sure if they're going to meld it into it, but they're definitely going to be aware of it and, and make sure that they're using it appropriately. Um, in regards to water, if you look at the infrastructure, it's item two N, water, sewer, and other utilities. And so when they're reviewing what our infrastructure is, it's not, it's, it's getting an understanding of what the existing infrastructure is and what we need for growth. And it's both from the built environment, but then anything that's impacting that, regulations, the water, um, rules, anything like that that's impacting it as well will, will play a role in that.
Okay. And, and I think the last thing I had was just a question on, uh, the levy. Uh, I know that we deal with the levy and, or have been dealing with the levy in, in many ways for many, many years. Uh, is there, is there something in here that, uh, that maybe they can use to help us deal with our levy issue, or is that something that, uh, is going to be a site issue for this?
Well, we're going to have probably two items related to the levy. The one is the very technical, what do we have to do to meet certification? And that's what we are going to hire a consultant for separate from this because it's engine, different types of engineers that, to develop that checklist of what's needed for certification. That's a very different type of thing. It doesn't involve much input from the public at all. It's a very technical checklist of, in order for us to receive certification, what we would have to do. The other part that we're all aware of related to the levy is how we've been using it as a trail in the public access for that. And I think that's a little bit more of a, a political, public desire kind of question that I think is very appropriate to tie into those focus groups where they're talking about the quality of life issues. How important are the trails? Where do they want to see the trails? And I would imagine the potential along the levy system will be brought up. And so that at least will be a very safe and objective environment to have those discussions without any property owner feeling as if they're being pressured. And, and it's something to get a community desire of, and then that can help guide maybe what council wants to do next.
Thank you, Heather. Council? Councilor Gillespie.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the city manager to award the contract with RPI Consulting for the update to the comprehensive plan, downtown assessment, and land development code assessment and correction in the amount not to exceed $248,300.
Second it. I have a motion on second authorizing our city manager to award the contract to RPI in the amount of $248,000. Uh, is there any further discussion? See, none? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next, we'll move on to Resolution 15 dash 2015, enact as fiscal agent for the grant application for the San Luis Valley Inspire Initiative grant from the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund. Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this kind of came to us last minute. We had a group of individuals within the valley who had worked on presenting an application to GOCO. This is a new funding stream that they are trying to focus on, um, across the state that helps connect the youth to the outdoors. So it's something that's different than your traditional parks and open space funding that they've done in the past. The first part of the project is to do a planning process and to see what already exists in the valley, what's missing, um, if there's linkages, those types of things. The group that began working on this had initially planned to use ASU as their fiscal agent and as a partner. GOCO informed them, um, fairly late in the process that that would not work, that it needed to be either a city, a county, or a special improvement district. So that's when they contacted the city to see if we would be willing to participate. While we were listed as a partner, I think our involvement was, was fairly minimal. I think Andy maybe was part of some discussions, but not all. But it's something that's, um, been identified as important to the partners here and, and for the valley. I think there's a benefit to the valley. Um, and if we can help by becoming more involved and then serving as the fiscal agent, we felt that it was an appropriate role for the city.
Thank you, Heather. Any comments or questions of Heather? Councilor Gregel.
I have a couple, uh, since we're going to be the fiscal agent, how much staff time and is that going to take for us to, to make sure that these funds are being spent the right way? And also is, I'm trying to figure out, this group is the one from the Poston? Or who's the group?
They are, they are one, um, of the partners is the, the Healthy Living Park, but you also still have ASU listed as a partner. Alpine Achievers, Boys and Girls Club, um, Canaos County Clean Water, Crestone Creative District, Rio Grande Headwaters Land Trust, San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition, Southwest Conservation Corps, and Town of Del Norte.
Thank you.
Sorry. There's, so there's quite, there's a quite a list. In regards to staff time, um, it, we could play it two different ways. We need to be appropriately involved since we're, we're serving as the fiscal agent. The other way I look at it as well, though, is, um, we could also bring maybe some assistance and coordination in, in trying to make sure that this is unbiased and, and a fair process and is looking not focused on any one part of the valley with any, just one loud voice. That it's, it's a pure process, and we could maybe help with that as well.
Councilor Coleman.
Yes. Thank you, Heather, for clearing that up with staff hours. Um, lately, we've been talking about building relationships with other stakeholders in the community. I think this is a good example of showing our good faith effort to, uh, build those relationships, uh, by helping them with this grant situation. Another thing I like about this opportunity for us to partner with this group is that it is going to connect the youth with outdoor activities. And anything that we can do to connect the youth with, uh, proper outdoor activities should be a benefit, not only to the families in our, in our city, but also in the San Luis Valley. So I really, uh, think this is something we should take the lead on and move forward with trying to help this group. Well, if there are no further questions, I guess I would like to make a motion that, um, staff, um, is allowed to act on the fiscal grant for the grant application for the San Luis Valley, uh, Inspire Initiative grant from the State Board of Great Outdoors of Colorado Trust Fund.
Councilor V. Hill.
Uh, Councilor Coleman, if you could please, uh, state the resolution number for the record.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Resolution Number 15 dash 2015.
Second.
I've got a motion on second on Resolution 15 dash 2015. Is there any further discussion? See, none? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Try to get out of this screen. Next, we'll move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I went to the school board meeting on Monday, and it was a very light meeting, just some quick highlights. Um, their teaching is starting to be driven by data, and this data comes from statewide issued tests. So, um, the, the teachers as a whole are starting to adapt to this and they're, and they're, they're liking it and it's effective. So that's a good thing. Um, they've also elected two new board members to their school board, and, uh, on Saturday, their, two of their, uh, teams are playing in the playoffs. Their volleyball team is hosting, uh, on Saturday at 10:00 AM. And on Saturday, the football team and, uh, Mr. Coleman over there is going to go to Lahuna and play at 1:00 PM in the playoffs. So if you can go out and support the team, that'd be awesome.
Thank you, Councilor V. Hill. Anyone else? We'll then move on to staff announcements. Heather.
I will make mine very quick because I know Holly has the fun announcements. Um, I wanted to let council know that we anticipate, um, a potential agenda item at your next meeting related to the easements on the Healthy Living Park. Um, we are getting some of the final, um, information to them as far as the potential location of where we would need easements. We're having discussions with them on, um, certain desires they have on how those trails would be maintained. Um, and so we're finalizing those discussions and would anticipate be, to bring something to you for acceptance of those easements with whatever limitations we might land on, um, in regards to maintenance. I think their biggest concern is they are looking for certification as, um, an organic farm, and so depending on the types of chemicals we may want to use or not use, um, and those types of things. So we're assessing that and, um, looking at what's required from a levy perspective versus noxious weeds and just public use. So, um, they know that, that we very much want them from a public use perspective, and they're still committed to that. We're just working through those details to make sure we can both accomplish what we need to. So I just wanted to make you aware of those discussions and hopefully an agenda item at the next meeting. And I'll turn it over to Holly.
Thank you, Heather.
So I get to announce, um, the results of the election. So we have, um, our two counselors who are already incumbent, Ty Coleman and Charles Gregel. They'll be serving for another four years. And then we have our new counselors who won, Liz Thomas Hensley and Christina Daniel. Um, Liz will be serving for Ward One, and Christina will be serving for Ward Two. Um, and then we will do all this wearing in on the next meeting's agenda. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Holly. Uh, any comments from, uh, our winners on council? Councilor Gregel, you?
Uh.
You, you are, you are going to, you're going to add to your longevity on council.
Yes.
Councilor Gregel?
Yes. Probably people think I'm crazy for, for, uh, maybe continuing to run, but, uh, I love my community, and I was born and raised in this community, and the only time I left was to serve the, serve my country. But, uh, I, years ago, I had, I had visit with our constituents, especially in the Washington D. area in Stockton. And that's an area where I think we still lack, uh, good streets, fact that those, in, in Stockton are the only streets, dirt streets I think we have in the whole city of Alamosa. So I, I felt, you know, that, you know, I told them that we were going to try to do something for them, and we started, so, phase one, so, and that. And I, I just want to thank everybody and welcome the two ladies that are coming to council, and, and thank everybody that, that did come out and, and run. You know, it takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication for this position, and, and a lot of care for your community to, to do so, to do a job like this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Gillespie.
Yes, I'd also just like to congratulate all the winners. I think I've done that earlier, uh, today, but, uh, I'd also like to thank everyone that ran in the election. Uh, that makes for good counselors, so. And I'd also like to, uh, congratulate the school board members. I think we have two new ones. Uh, great job, so appreciate that. And while I'm at it, I guess, are we on council comment?
Yes, we, we got on it, just a little bit before.
I, I have one more thing. Um, so at the next meeting, too, we're going to recognize Greg, and then we're also going to recognize Rusty for their terms that they served. And then just to mention that 1A, was it 1A? 1A passed, too.
Thank you. Councilor Gillespie, you've got your moment.
Am, am I now on, uh?
You are on council comment, yes.
Uh, I've been contacted several times this week about the roundabout on Clark Street with, uh, most of those comments being negative. However, I have received very favorable comments about the new sidewalks along Clark. Uh, people in the past who have had to walk in the street, including a few wheelchairs, are now able to, uh, stay out of the road and safely walk on the sidewalk. I was very pleased to see the marijuana vote in Ohio soundly defeated. I think this speaks volumes as to how other states view what's going on in Colorado. I also heard that the vote to approve the sale of marijuana in South Fork also failed. Uh, thanks to everyone that supported Amendment 1A. This shows that the citizens of Alamosa recognize the need for an updated and larger judicial center. And last, I thought this was my last meeting, but I'll go on.
Councilor Gillespie, we're not going to let you go that easy, you know?
I want everyone to know what an honor and privilege it has been to serve on, as councilman for the past 12 years. It has been both challenging and humbling to serve the citizens of Alamosa. I have worked with many wonderful people from the city, including businessmen, councilmen, mayors, and city employees. I want to wish my successor, Liz Thomas Hensley, the best as I turn this seat over to her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie. Councilor Coleman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank all of the participants who, uh, ran for the open city council slots. You all ran very professional and clean, respectful campaigns, and that says a lot about you and your character and the people that you're representing. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Liz and Christina. Welcome aboard. We're glad to, uh, have your new bright and talented minds to come and join us, so we're looking forward to working with you. And, um, also, I would like to congratulate the county. I know they were excited last night with the passage of, uh, 1A, and it looks like the county will be able to move forward with their future plans, uh, in development, which overall will help our city as well as a whole. Uh, the school board members who were elected and reelected to the school board, congratulations to you as well. And, um, I just would like to thank all of the people who came out and voted for me as well. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be a servant and to serve, uh, for four years, and I'm greatly, uh, thankful, and I appreciate all of the people who came out and voted. You all are the best.
Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick thank you to everybody, and congratulations to Liz Thomas, Christina Daniel, Mr. Coleman, and Mr. Gregel on your victories last night. Uh, and also a sincere thank you to Joshua Butters, Hendrick. Um, also with the one A for the county, congratulations. And for the roundabout, um, I've kind of heard other things. I've heard good things about it. Uh, I just want to remind the public that it's, it's safer, it's, uh, cheaper than a stoplight and it gets the traffic moving quicker. And I've talked to, I've, in fact, I talked to the principal at the high school about, uh, how the kids are handling it and he said they're doing fine, there hasn't been any incidents. So, I think it'll just take a little bit and, and we'll be used to it. Thank you.
Councilor Gregel.
Uh, since we're on council comment, I had two of them, uh, this coming Wednesday, the, the eleventh is Veterans Day and I want to invite, uh, council to sit on the pass and review, stand for Veterans Day. The parade starts at, uh, I believe ten thirty. So, we want to, then the stand will be right in front of the, the bank, the state bank right there on Main Street. On my second comment, I, I wanted to, uh, uh, recognize the fact that, uh, we lost one of our former city councilmen, Mr. Eddie Garcia. He, he represented Ward Four. I, I had an opportunity and an honor to serve with him. Uh, I asked Holly to send a, a card on behalf of the council and I believe that the mayor signed it. But Mr. Garcia, just like the rest, have, they cared for the community and his service for the, for Ward Four, he did a great job. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, send our condolences to his family and so, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Coleman.
Yes, I just wanted to add, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilman V. Hill for recognizing the Alamosa High School. Once again, they are going to the playoff to, uh, beat La Hanta this weekend. And, uh, this is the first time that the high school football team has been to the playoff in several years. I want to say close to ten years or something like that. So, um, I wish them much success this weekend.
Thank you. And so, I'm, I'm bringing up the rear. Ladies, congratulations. Mr. Cooper, you had, it was a good fight. Uh, all the folks that, uh, that ran, thank you because Alamosa's a great place to live and we all realize that and we all want to contribute. Uh, you may have lost the election, but don't lose interest in government because we need you. We need all the input we can get. Uh, many times we have empty seats, uh, every first and third Wednesday of the month. And if we could fill those seats with people that are interested and concerned about our government, I, I think it would flow a lot better and we'd be a lot more informed. These ladies, uh, are chomping at the bit, I can tell. Uh, you've got, uh, you've got three, four counselors up here, five with Mr. Stefano, you know, but, uh, we're excited to have, uh, you ladies on board. We haven't had ladies on board since, uh, ex-Mayor Rogers and Councilor Togle were here. I'm sure you're going to be, bring a new perspective and a new energy and added insight to a lot of the discussion items we'll have. Thank you for that. And so, after that, I think we have a need for an executive session. Uh, Councilor Stefano is not here. I know that, uh, we all kind of wanted to have, uh, a full contingent, uh, but, uh, if, uh, if, if that's, uh, council's wish, we'll move into executive session. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion. We move into executive session pursuant to, uh, Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses F for the, for personal matters, uh, evaluation of the city manager.
I second. I've got a motion on second. Any further discussion on CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F? See none? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And after our executive session is over, Ruth, we will just come out and go back into regular session and there will be no further business discussed. We'll adjourn at that time. Thank you. And so, that will move into executive session.